All I can say is go to the React side and check it out.
So let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is now three oh one P M.
Where is uh?
Gordon.
Gordon.
I know that Jim is not having his team.
Yeah, Jim.
Traveling.
Oh, it's Gordon. No, Jim's traveling.
But we're good. Okay.
There he is.
Where am I?
Where are you, man?
Perfect.
I'll go back over.
Anyway.
We're already called to order, so please have a seat, Mr. Vice Chair.
Sit down, Chair. Hmm, you're on.
You're Chair Vice.
Yes.
You're 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 on.
We do have a forum. We have one member um missing. Excuse me.
Jim, bless you.
Thank you. Um, who um let me know, so in um absence. A chair report. I I have things to say about each agenda item, so I don't really have a chair report other than um what we'll be talking about today. Uh, and we do not have any ad hoc committee reports right now. Any committee member, committee members have any communications they'd like to um put on the record? Nope.
Good start.
Well.
Okay, yeah.
No, I saw something go blank. Okay.
And the only reason I would say that is because um I would like to do, I'd like to have a comment about the last item on the agenda, and if we don't get to that agenda item, I'd like to make sure that I.
No.
I think we're gonna start with that.
I was able to.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So none there either.
No, all right. Thank you. So um we have Laura Schwartz on, so and we have no uh visitors in the room, so we'll go ahead and go to public comment. Laura, do you have a public comment? Nope. Nope. Okay, all right. Well, welcome, no matter what, welcome. Let's go then to the consent agenda. And are there any additions, deletions, edits to the consent agenda? It's just the one, yeah. So I need to give you a minute to take a look at them.
I already looked at it myself.
Yeah, I was looking at it. Yeah, I was looking at it prior to this. Now, I think we can probably just.
I'm moving away except.
There was one misspelling that I.
You wanna point that out?
Uh, let me see if I can. You know, it's 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 just a minor.
Okay. So do I have a motion to um accept the consent agenda?
You will be accepted.
Okay. All those in favor?
Mine.
Right? Any opposed? Or approved? Nice. Thank you for the wonderful minutes again.
You're welcome.
Man, this guy is a machine.
Yeah, he is a machine.
And you are not Devo.
Okay, you know, we've had a request, and I was planning on doing this anyway, so that was a really good request was to go to Agenda Item four E, uh, the discussion and consideration of the climate change policy uh to begin the meeting, and this is under regulations, so this is Agenda Item four E. And so let's go in and turn to Agenda Item four E. Okay. Yes. So um I take it that you've all reviewed the documents that are attached?
Yeah.
And um how many of you were there for the board actually boarding? Or listened in on the board?
I'll listen to it later.
You wanna give a quick report about what happened there?
Basically, what was written in this note?
Yes. My my discussion?
Oh, well, yeah. Four F discussion.
Yes, four E.
E, right.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that was basically what they had to decide was to relinquish it from our committee and pass it on to us with some one dissent.
Yes, one dissent.
And so. One dissent.
Yes, yeah.
Well, they didn't really descend at the end, I don't think.
Yeah.
Or did he? I can't remember that. You know, he was pushing heavy.
Yeah. Yeah, the discussion was this that we really need to have a we need to establish a Climate Action Plan Committee. That was the kind of the contentious part.
We.
And um and I think that that's what that will do is that will be part of the policy that we create.
Uh huh.
Oh. Um, and because that, well, for instance, I think they looked at, what did they say, L A County? Um, they looked at the L A County um Climate Action Plan.
Yeah.
And it was over, it was like two hundred and fifty pages.
Well.
So. Hi there.
It, you know, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be anything on that scale for us.
Well, no, we're gonna do a policy.
Yeah.
And so I think it's gonna be really important for us to talk about what the difference between a Climate Action Plan Committee is and then and and climate climate change policy, but I think let's start with what do we wanna call it?
It. It continues to dawn on me that, you know, that you know, if we talk about action and talk about policy, what what are the goals? You know, I mean, it are is our goal to become net zero by a certain point in time? Um, you know, there's 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 actions and there's points of, you know, uh, points of completion along the way, you know, just just like you do your, you know, your uh projects, you know?
Strategic plan?
Uh, yeah, the strategic plan. You know, obviously, this is something that that, you know, it it it's gonna kind of have to be almost and and almost a hybrid thing between, you know, a policy a- and goal setting, I guess, net zero goal setting.
No.
I mean, I haven't looked at the one from L A.
Mm hmm.
And certainly, we certainly, I think that it'd be important for us to see whoever, you know, has written policy in this area and how they how they've approached it. And of course, we we need to be thinking about what you know, the state is is requiring, because I know that they have they have come through with um you know, uh some goals for you know, net zero, uh, and you know, are requiring everybody, you know, districts, cities, what you name it, uh, to be uh considering this issue. So I would say that the first part of the journey is information gathering.
That's gonna be our ad hoc committee. There is an ad hoc committee that we need to
Right.
identify, and um I am open to people who would be willing to be on that committee. And that committee, that ad hoc committee will need to do the research.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, and I I I put my, I'm throwing my hat around that one. If anybody else, I'd love to have people join me, I know he'd be a good person. You'd be a good person.
I have some resources.
It's a medical emergency.
Yeah, I mean, if there's one person who's got a bucket load of res- resources in this in this area, would you would be willing to join me on a
Yeah.
You can have community members.
Yeah, you can have community members in ad hoc.
Yeah. If we have a community member, we can have, we need to have one more committee member.
Okay.
Which would be nice to be three people.
So you don't have a quorum, three is three, you guys. And that way you could have, you could have ten.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of sort of a question.
Sure.
I'm scratching my head a little. I I think you kind of brought it a little bit. There's there's what what is a pol- what does that mean?
Yeah.
To my mind, and maybe I'm off on this, is that, for example, that the, an example of a very, it seems to me you policy is at a high level that drives action.
Right.
Okay, so the question is, and you kind of brought it forward, is it is it appropriate to put in a policy that say it is the policy of the district to achieve net zero by some particular time? Would that be a legitimate policy?
Yeah, I think it would. I think it would.
Yeah, I think it could include goals.
Yes.
It's just part of, in fact, that's. That's kind of what I.
That's mainly what the policy needs to be.
That's kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, and you voiced it nicely.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Yep.
Who else?
Oh, you're talking, you're looking for the ad hoc.
Yes.
I'm volunteering how.
Yeah, you're you're you're. I wonder if Jim wouldn't wanna do it.
I think we could all still walk enough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, be a good one.
He would be excellent.
Volunteering while he's gone. That's right. You don't come to the meeting, you're on.
Let's let's put him in tentatively, and if he refuses.
Yeah, we'll have to.
We'll have to come back next.
Yeah.
Next time.
I mean, Jim is really acutely, you know, on on stuff, and that, I like that a lot.
Yeah, and so um when you're doing the research, please keep track of the citations. Make sure that you have the citation so that we can use that when we do the policy. It's gonna be really important to have um, you know, a factual basis for the kind of things that we're gonna be recommending to the board.
It would actually, it could be um a page on the district website.
Yeah.
Supporting document.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Very much.
Yeah.
Okay. So um
do you want a motion for that?
Well, um, I'm I'm gonna say that we could leave it to the committee to name the policy.
Let's try.
Okay.
Let's gather information to see what falls in, we're making encompassing more.
That makes sense.
What we think.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I will come to the meeting if it fits into my schedule.
Well, if you have three, you won't be able to attend.
Oh, that's right. Oh, you can have more citizens, but only.
Only three, and we have to, we'll have to actually.
Well, you. Sounds like you can't say a.
That's true. You can't say a word.
Yeah.
Because we do a lot.
I could sit there and.
Well, the the question is, it, she could certainly observe or uh, yeah, she could observe, would she not be able to participate in uh, no, not in the meeting, but in this meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Here. I could write comments later or something.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah, I could do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we discuss it as a group, let's take it.
Well, yeah, once they, well, I think I'm gonna have you guys report.
Right.
Uh, at each meeting to tell us what kind of progress is going on.
Right.
And that kind of thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, right, right. Yeah.
And I do think what you, what you said, I was gonna go to Webster's Dictionary and get a definition of policy and a definition of plan, but um I I'm gonna leave that to you guys, um, because we do need to look at it from a much higher level than an actual plan. And a plan will give you step by step by step, whereas a policy is gonna give you um.
Your goals.
The the goals, but it's also gonna look at, I hope, that you look at not only um for instance, what what are the causes of climate change? And are those causes something that we can have an impact on? Rather than just.
React.
Yeah.
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 I guess what the board was looking for is a general plan and then to come back in under it and do what they have to do to reach those goals.
Right.
Um, when you're working on this um plan or policy, um I think it would be important to separate out um the lighting policy. There was one written while back.
Yeah.
And I'd like to maybe update it and.
Well, why don't why don't we include it?
Or we can include it.
I would, I would think that would be.
Separate.
I mean, you know, I mean, yeah.
As already mentioned, then.
If you.
Solution.
But you look at it.
Detail.
Yeah, if you, well, okay, two things. One, it can be included, but that, but the step by step of how to address that it needs to be, needs to be in a separate policy. You know, I think mentioning it in the this policy is important.
But point to uh another separate policy.
Right.
Awesome.
Sure.
Um an example, now again, this is just, tell me if if this is off, uh, a kind of a policy statement. We already made one, you know, it's very broad, you know, like net zero, but also it occurs to me, sometimes it might be appropriate, I think it's at the policy level to, what you're dealing with is the, what people, what kind of criteria are being used to make choices?
Yes.
So for example, if I say I need to buy a truck, then there's, what is, what the the issue is, what what should be the considerations? Obviously, the cost, but the question is maybe also if the effect of that truck upon climate, in other words, and and how should those work? Should should it's, in other words, should, if there was an electric vehicle available, but it was more expensive than a gasoline powered vehicle, then how should the management decide?
Yeah. So it's really about criteria that you're that, so you're really looking at the criteria that you're being, that you're using to make decisions that the board will make decisions on.
Well, I think what you're, you know, getting at is cost versus benefits.
Well, but that's an issue. I mean, because there is, it's it's a benefit that something's cheap, but it may be a cost that it pollutes the environment beyond what we want.
Yeah.
But in another, in another context, one might choose the cost. And there was, that has to be, because normally, I think as we move forward, cost is a big issue.
Yeah.
And then if you wanna say, well, maybe there's an overriding issue.
Well, that's a policy statement. Yeah, and 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 I think it, you know, in terms of of vehicles, obviously, you know, obviously, there are some available, there's some not. Prices of uh electric vehicles are going to drop considerably soon, because better technology is just going nuts. Uh uh, so, you know, those those are definitely, you know, and of course, you really have to look, you really have to look at price per mile.
What is, what is?
Those, that's an example.
And and I'm thinking the other thing you need to look at is do we have charging stations to be able to charge those? So then where do we go with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, two things, um.
One.
Not ever wait that long, I forget. Okay, I I think of what the other thing is, oh, the life cycle cost. Oh, right there, life cycle cost, that's very important, and most people don't take that in consideration, so um that takes, encompasses everything you're talking about. Yes, this whole is all, yeah, exactly. Then the other thing I want to say is that, this is just, it's a point of information. Uh, I just punched in uh plan versus a policy. This is the purpose of a plan is to describe a solution for implementing a policy.
Yeah. Yeah.
I like that. Of a plan include addressing the question of how to carry out policy.
Yes.
Uh, it is, it is carried out with an initial investment of time and resources, so anyway, I'm gonna copy and paste.
Well, that was, that was something that we addressed way back when, was the difference between policy and procedure. And 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 we, we at one point in time discussed how important it was to make sure that, you know, that uh that we didn't get bogged down in procedure. Yeah. Because at at the end of the ti- at the end of the time, and then the day, you know, the actual procedure, how this thing be done, it's gonna require a lot of input from you know, uh, Matt and the rest of his employee staff.
Yeah, the other, the other point about this is that if you put in a plan and procedure, then you end up uh telling them how to do it, and we've always kind of had, you know, kind of backed off of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
That's not our.
So maybe we only want a policy and not a, not a.
Yeah.
Planner.
Yeah.
Procedure.
Yeah.
Like.
I mean, that might be the business of R and I, but it's, it 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 it's not the business of policy.
We're gonna have suggestions, suggestions.
Yes, policy could specify the components.
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go.
Yeah.
Components, I like the components of both.
So we're supposed to have all technical vehicles at a certain date, I think, something like that is already.
Well, again, that's.
By the state.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's gonna be something that we'll flesh out when we, when we get our materials together.
Okay. Uh, well, we're gonna have them come back every meeting, we're gonna put you on for um for progress.
Sure.
And um get started right away. Okay.
It's a good job, and well.
When we're building a day. All all I can say is that all of this, you know, is, you look at the I P C C report, man, we do not have time for messing around. We're out of time.
That's true.
Okay, great.
Okay.
I repeat all this back just for a quick on purpose here. So uh it is, the chairman has elected to.
Yes.
Appoint a committee uh to work on it, to do the research and come forth and to start developing a climate change policy uh and to uh come back uh with with the progress report at each of our next meetings, knowing that this is an ongoing job, and that the committee members are Gordon and Ted for sure, and possibly Jim Townsend.
No, not.
No.
Gordon said no.
You know.
I didn't say no. Jim just isn't here to say no.
We can have.
Okay, who's on the committee list?
Right now, it's, it's Christina and I.
And Jim.
Yeah, but she's not a committee member, she can't, yeah, so.
Okay, so we 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 have uh put forth a possibility, you know, of of approaching.
We have appointed Jim.
We have.
He says no.
Oh, okay, great. All right, thank you.
So so I just have Ted and.
May I, may I ask? So is there uh any limit to um non policy committee, if the citizens joining? Um, you know, I I just want, because Laura is an incredibly knowledgeable person. If she's here and she's interested in joining our uh climate policy.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know whether she is or not, but.
She's here.
Yeah, well, one thing I know is that that, you know, she she and her husband are, you know, incredibly bright people, so, you know, um if if she's interested, that's, that would be.
So I I'm still confused. Okay, so the the official committee members so far.
Yes.
Are Ted and Jim, and we do have an opening for a third.
No.
You know, I can't have three.
Yeah.
She said you couldn't have three.
No.
No, you can have four.
I don't know.
Three is a, because it's a five member board, but we're a six member committee, so four is a majority.
I I wanna just do two, two.
Okay, well, I said this one.
Yeah.
Get clear. Okay, so the committee consists of ten.
The chair wants to do two.
Yeah.
So that means you could attend them.
I can just hang out.
No. You can attend if you can.
Yeah.
Three, that's what he's saying.
You said two.
You know.
I can say two. I'm gonna say two, and then we can revisit this in a month.
Okay.
Well, what I'm suggesting is having three there is not a, the gate it. You can have three is what Don said.
I know, but I think.
If you want to attend, you can still speak up on being there, right? That's what I'm trying to perfect.
No, we're gonna do two in the ad hoc committee, and then, and then we'll revisit it. Um, I I'll tell you why. It's harder for three people to get work done than two people.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And Jim doesn't like to work with other people. He, last time we put him on the ad hoc committee, he goes up.
Oh, he did by himself. Yeah.
Yeah, I was on a committee with him, then he never, whenever.
Right, so that's, that's why I'm saying two. And then in a month, we'll come back and and we'll, we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean.
So before we make uh, before we make a a motion, um, I'm gonna ask for a comment, and I would hope that Laura will speak to our public.
Yeah, she doesn't have answers now, I mean, she I just put it out there, because she's happy to be here.
I know she doesn't have her hand up.
She's.
Oh, here she comes.
Yes. Yes. Let's go ahead and let her in.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you wanna speak, Laura?
She's muted, yeah.
She doesn't want to speak, but. Oh.
Okay.
Well, wait, 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 wait.
You can contact her.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
You can jump in on.
You know, she and her husband have have done some pretty big things. I mean, they were.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you know, they were, they were on the, on the build out reduction thing forever and ever.
About that before we make a motion. No? Will you make a motion?
I can do that.
Okay.
Okay, I moved that an ad hoc committee be established to work on a climate change policy and do the requisite research. Uh, and that that committee consists of Ted Key and Jim Townsend. And that further the committee be requested to uh give uh monthly of a report, progress reports at our coming up meetings.
That's right.
Need a second?
I'll send it.
Okay, moved on.
What about Christine? Isn't she on the committee?
Uh, she. Yeah, it wouldn't be part of the motion.
Yeah, that wouldn't be part.
It was done and uh Ted Ted seconded, right?
I did.
Okay.
I got it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Oh.
Great. Any opposed? Great, motion passes.
Cool.
All right. All right, let's go then to Agenda Item four A. And four A is the discussion and consideration of the updated C C S D owned vehicle policy. And um I would like to ask Mister Beckelmann if he would um present this again.
Sure. Agenda number four is discussion consideration of the updated C C S D on vehicle policy, the all just you know, and we've talked about this a few times, obviously, the policy committee has helped design sections one and two, second three is left off which regards to his uh district own vehicles, um specifically on water and wastewater boats. Uh, as discussed before in in these meetings, that there were management staff with the district own vehicles, but occasionally will respond to one of these waters, and it's not practiced, and now you're codifying the um this policy as well as new resolution, water and wastewater on call personnel will be allowed to take home two vehicles so that we don't have to discuss it anymore. And so we've um had conversations in the closed session, which later we're gonna do it, and we thought um some of that, some of those concerns, though, and it's my group will bring before the board, and it'll be enough.
Great.
So you see the changes um that have been made? And there is a typo under cap. Where it says when you utilize any C C S D or privately owned vehicle.
Four.
Whoops.
Yeah, get rid of four.
Or just four.
Yeah.
Oh, period.
Yeah, comma.
Um.
Oh, the, the vehicle maybe here to attend wheels. Otherwise, um, discussion. Otherwise, um, discussion. Many numbers?
Yes, we have still the same concerns I did last time.
Hey, why don't you state them?
Well, one of them is the uh. Inspection process, which is listed in here on a daily basis, I think is the word. And then they negate it, and he gets under item C. Says daily inspection of each invic- vehicle is to be performed prior to the operation of any district-owned vehicle. But daily. It could be eliminated because whenever you're gonna operate it, you should inspect it. Right.
Yeah.
I mean, it's sort of, you have to do it daily, but you don't if you don't operate it, right?
Yeah, right.
Do you want it to be um inspected if they're not gonna be used that day?
It really depends on each. Departments. Of policies, the fire department has different policies about which vehicles are shut down, so even if they're not being operated, they'll get a weekly check. So for instance, a water tender may only get a weekly.
Okay.
And then um.
That's not a daily.
So, so we should get rid of daily.
It says daily.
So.
That's a different.
Questions asked if I would want.
Yeah, no, okay, so let's.
It depends on each department's. You know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I was just.
So let's delete daily and put a A N. And inspection.
What did you say? I can't hear you.
Um, delete daily.
And put in what?
And put in, you have to do it, instead of A inspection, it would be N inspection.
Right. Just to control prior to the operation.
Um.
So this means like when you first get the car or, or the truck, and that's it?
No, prior to using it.
Right, right, yeah, prior, prior to using it, you should.
It doesn't specify that it's just once or every day or.
It's whenever, yeah.
But it doesn't say that, it could just be once.
It says prior to.
You took out daily, so.
Yes.
Prior to operation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, eh, do, i- is there?
But it, it still doesn't say if it's when you first get the vehicle or if it's every day. Every time you use it.
Yeah, it's every time.
Right, that's what it says, yes.
Right to operation.
Yeah.
Right.
Then especially.
It's fine.
If you didn't want to say daily, would you want to just say every time you use it, though, as you said?
Right.
Why don't you wanna say every time you use it?
Well, then we just.
It said that.
Prior to the operation.
Right.
That's how I interpret it.
However, uh. Matt just mentioned a particular inspection schedule.
Yeah.
Do we wanna refer to that in this as well, uh, or she just mentioned inspection schedules?
I don't think we need to.
Do we need to even go there?
So, I mean, it's rather vague in terms of inspections, right, so. You know, for, for a fire department, there's a much more in-depth inspection of some of our. Yeah, with fire engines that have air brakes and things like that, so.
Yeah.
By definition, this policy, I think if they're following their departmental policy, the fire department policy, their inspection could be defined as. They did a walk-around.
Okay.
Yeah, the fire engine.
I, I just, I just want, I just want this to be reflective of.
Uh, were you gonna add it, the language in there, inspected as um dictated by.
Routine.
That's what I was saying.
Departmental.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, yeah.
Per.
Inspection routine.
Per de mar- departmental.
A routine inspection.
Yeah, ru- ru- routine inspections, um.
No, routine isn't, isn't a good way to define it. I would put per departmental uh policies.
Guidelines.
That's how.
Is there one?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
Alright, that settles it.
Why are we taking daily?
Because they don't use them every day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it's much more effective to just say.
That means somebody has to inspect it every day.
Yeah, and people will be wasting time, inspecting every vehicle, that isn't gonna necessarily.
They have to come on Saturday and Sunday and inspect them.
Oh, that, yeah, that's another question.
Take out daily and put per departmental policy.
Yes.
Policies.
Policies, yeah.
Okay, cool. And what else did you?
No, my other concern is. Sort of like relates to item F.
Okay.
See.
And uh. When you utilize the CCSD over privately owned vehicles. Not the key here, where it is privately owned. The vehicles may be used to attend meals, other activities directly related to the training conference or other. Functions as defined by the district's travel policy. But uh. My question is, that sounds like. The person's able to use the vehicle, their own new vehicle whenever it's appropriate, they authorized.
They are.
So the question would be, we should authorize them to go home and back and pay for doing that instead of taking a vehicle.
That, that, that's beside the point now.
No, that's. That's not what's tied to, Ron is mentioning that, that's. My point of interest from beginning was, they didn't need to take emergency vehicle outside this jurisdiction.
If I may, or the chair, uh, this is specifically related to the travel policy.
Right.
And so it has nothing to do with what you're speaking of, but.
Well, I'm saying there is a policy for using your own vehicle. Which are functions, one of those functions could when you drive it home. And that.
Travel policy.
No, that's what I said, I'm using that one to bring it back up to the top one, and not use it for driving a truck. That's good, my weakness.
But earlier in this policy.
Me this.
They are going to take it home, the two people in the.
That's what it says, but I'm disagreeing with that. Right, that's what I'm saying, I'm disagreeing with that. I'm just saying that there is a policy for taking a privately owned vehicle.
Yes.
Place.
There is.
And therefore, one of those places could be to take it home on their assignment or that daily activity, instead of taking home.
They could.
A truck.
Utility.
Which in turn saves the mileage on the vehicle, that puts them back on their miles, we give them so much money for that short time. Can the vehicle always be here, instead of if there's an earthquake or some other activity? That may not get it through highway forty-six, it would be here in Cambria and not in Batho, or desert, small location.
Right.
That was my point of interest, and this relates to me, since I live here in Cambodia. And I live in an area that have the need for emergencies, that when that happens, it's a safety to the public. To consider that option, instead of taking the vehicle home.
There are six vehicles. So there will always be four here, even though those two people take the, their, those home, there will still be four vehicles here.
Nobody to drive them, and nobody to drive them. Cuz the two people are still in.
Well, that's, that's, yeah, that, that's, yeah, that, that's a problem outside scope with this.
That has nothing to do.
But, but there are people who perhaps live in rural bay, who can get here. Who, towards them, which is a good reason that. We have six instead of two.
Yeah, that's my opinion. I wanna change it and say they don't leave at all, period.
I know you do.
Okay, that's my.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my.
Anybody else?
I, I just had a clarification, I think you fixed this, but uh, the, the number F. Vehicle owned for the vehicle may be used.
Yeah, we got rid of four.
You fixed. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's.
So a minor change on C.
Yes.
And then the, the uh.
Yeah.
The, the corrections.
Yeah.
For F.
But before we make a motion, we might have public comment.
Right.
Is there, so are you all, okay, you've done, you've said you needed to say?
Yes.
Okay.
I am.
Let's do public comment.
Yeah, I was still concerned about um, about that, and it's interesting how this has evolved. Because back mark, in March, there was not one truck and one piece of equipment, and not only one person to drive it. Now we got sick, actually, in one meeting, we had eight trucks, and there would always be six in the district.
Yes.
Now there's six trucks, so they're always, you know, the, the numbers have changed, the numbers change with every meeting. Which I think is very curious, I think I maybe like to have a tour of these at some point. I can count how many there actually are, since we've had so many different reports, and there's been so many different rationals.
Yeah.
For this, from the union, to the emergency, it was better to have equipment that was not in town than have it in town. And then there was pathogens on the clothes.
Right.
Rational, so um. I would still say that I don't think this is a good idea, I think that it's putting too many miles, too much wear and tear on our vehicles. Actually, it's part of what we're gonna be dealing with, the climate uh policy will be. Significantly adding to Cambria's carbon footprint by having those uh emissions, and uh. I think that there are so many ways around it that, that are simpler and more direct, which is, like every other employee does. You drive your own part of work, you know.
Yeah.
Well.
Thank you.
I, I, is, isn't one of the motivating factors is that, you know, in order to get a good employee, you have to give them a.
No.
That it's been stated.
Yeah, but it's no longer that way.
No.
That was, that was one of the long lists.
Yeah.
That was in there with the pathogens on the clothes.
Yeah, that's no longer the case.
I still don't, I, I still.
I couldn't hear that comment, something about everybody gets a car?
Yeah. In order to get good.
Management getting cars to go home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, at one point, two gentlemen ago, there was a recruitment for the water superintendent, wastewater superintendent, and there was a handshake. Recruitment deal of, you will get a supervisor's truck, can commute back and forth. Never caught filed in any employment agreement, any side letter, it was just a handshake deal.
Yeah.
And so that's what brought in some of our other superintendents. And then that policy, lack of a policy, that handshake deal just is not allowing anyone.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, not a good thing. So it's simply not doing anything. Jim doesn't have a car.
Yeah.
And he's putting down a car, he doesn't have a car, nobody has a car.
Except for the two people that have the car.
The two people that have the car are. Specifically for their own.
Only when they are on.
When they get their private lives temporarily, so that they can come in with those.
And then you have the fire chief, who's always.
I think, I think it's safe to say we can know their climate policy, any vehicles that are leaving for the purpose of, you know. Commuting on emergency basis, only electric.
Yes.
That would be a recommendation.
That it would be, yeah, that, that will, that will be a, a, a strong.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Um, any other statements or any other public comments? Nope.
I think this is good.
Okay.
I think we've really fleshed out.
Yeah.
You know.
And you're right, there's been lots of discussions and lots of fact finding and that kind of thing, so. Anyway, we're at a point now where I think we're ready to have a motion.
So.
This is agenda item four A.
I move that we um accept the policy um. The CCSD owned vehicle policy um to be approved by the board, policy number thirty-six oh five. Um, with the. Um. Corrections that we have noted in this meeting to the board to be uh voted on.
I'm gonna say changes is the corrections. Changes as noted in this meeting.
That we, yeah, that we advanced this uh policy number thirty-six oh five to one, simple enough.
When do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay.
Go to, dog, second.
And all those um who approve?
I.
All those opposed?
I.
I. And I get to vote, and I approve.
We did two, right?
Yeah.
Three to two chair voting. And then normally what I put in the, and actually according to Robert's rules, the dissenters always get their names.
Yes.
Dissent is really important.
Yeah.
So dissenting are Gordon, I see Gordon and Claudia in dissent. But he's not.
That's where my point is. He's done it to me twice now.
Get on his case.
No, he's done it three times.
I think we were to call him off the board.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead to agenda item four B. This is the discussion and consideration of the role of the general ma- manager policy. So my first question to you all is. Did you read all of? Matthew's stuff? Those documents are entitled. His employment agreement. Those are pages eighteen. Through. Twenty-three, and then the second document. Is the general manager um position specifications. Which is agenda, I, I mean, which is page twenty-four through um twenty-six. Wanna make sure that you all very carefully review these two documents.
What was the uh? Previous, all these things and catched in between.
I'm sorry. Well.
That related to other than what he was assigned to do, sort of. Or was it?
Yeah, it's his, his position is charged with following. Um, really supporting the strategic plan. Which brings up my. My only thing that. Even though it's not explicitly or specifically um s- said. In the um position description. Yeah, um, that may be the only thing that we want to have, but up to you all. Because, do you have any thoughts about that, Mr. Matthews?
Which, which piece, I'm sorry?
About um. Both your employment agreement and your position description. Um, does not say specifically that you are charged with leading your staff in meeting. The goals of the strategic plan.
Yes, so the employment agreement is specific to. What I considered that at the.
Right.
That nature, so I don't think that's so, it's to keep their goals would be a part of that.
No.
Um.
And not only that, but they changed.
But there's reference to staff effectiveness, policy execution. Um, district leadership, which I think by the board establishing.
Yeah.
Those strategic plans, that's. Towards, towards accomplishing, I mean, of course, the board would like some reference to it, and then the position description, I don't see why that's being issued.
That's what, that's what, that, I think that would be the way to do it.
In the position description.
No, because he already signed that and it's. Yeah.
And it changes your.
Yeah, no, I think. Yeah, no, I think.
You're right, the position description, there's reference to service delivery management, operational plan, uh operational planning, anticipated future needs. Organize organizing work operations, time tables, who are working into projects. And a lot of that.
Yeah.
Back to the strategic plan in my mind, but it could get more specific.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of implicit in in the project, in the position description. But it doesn't say specifically, so rather than have a whole another policy. Because these two documents are pretty comprehensive. What would you, what would you think about the possibility of asking the board to add a statement within the position specification about somehow referring to the strategic.
I can't hear you.
About somehow referring to the strategic plan in the position specification. I'm I I'm ready for any discussion that you have.
I agree, it shouldn't be in there. Because that's what you're trying to accomplish.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, well, I think what um member Howell is saying, Secretary Howell is saying is put it under performance expectation.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, rather than having a whole nother policy, I don't know, I think that's important.
She wanted us, under G D S of the general manager.
It's it's uh.
Thank you.
It's in the next opposition descriptions.
See that.
Twenty-five. I don't know, I just really, I scanned it and I thought, well, and it says under policy execution, it said assisting the CTSB board of directors and other community stakeholders. Identify, work toward and achieve common goals and objectives. You could be as described in the strategic plan.
That's even better.
Yeah.
I like that, that's easy to.
Yeah.
It's spread of the district.
District. Yes, it's called the strategic plan.
Just doesn't.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll go for that. And we did, you just do that.
As indicated.
Oh, policy execution, also, take the period off.
Yeah.
And say as indicated.
This is number one.
Give me your under policy execution.
Yeah, so number one is.
No, it's a, it's a just continuation of the policy execution as indicated.
Do you think about that?
I look at the strategic goals as, you know, chipping away at different complements. Closer we get to that.
That's your overarching to-do list, right?
She's suggesting.
They're chipping away.
Receiving this.
So incremental wins, you know, over the period, I think you have to understand that strategic goals are sometimes longer.
We're gonna, we're gonna de-balance the next de-balance, you're not gonna speculate in this.
You know, I I, yeah, I think you'll see some, some of those strategic goals, uh, you know, uh, happen when we do our.
Well, certainly in the fact sense, this here.
Should I have consensus? Um, should we indicate where you can find the strategic plan?
It's, well, it's, it's on the website.
I know, but should we have some kind of say? You're talking about citations, that what we're doing when we're kind of climate change, and we have citations in these two. Especially if there's something where you're just, that's a, that's a big thing.
About the district's strategic plan, yeah?
Let's see. Immunity Services District, three years strategic goals. I would say districts. Or is it named that?
Yeah, it, well, why didn't we put strategic plan right here?
Change that.
Well, you know, I think what we're gonna do, if you all approve and we're gonna vote on it. Um, if you approve, we can say to the board, you know, that this doesn't say this is the strategic plan. So maybe we need to put the name there and then add that to the position strategy. And then the board can make a decision about whether or not they want to do that. I think that, that board member Thomas will really love that.
So how do you change the word if we want to add anything more to it, closing now?
No.
To save us to keep or the district.
The district.
Oh, it's the district. With the capital D.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, I didn't understand what you're talking about, you said something about, then this, the the district will approve whether they want this wording or not.
Yeah, I'm gonna take, yeah, they're gonna have to um decide whether or not they want to change the description. The position description, that'll be something we're proposing. And then also to identify this as the strategic plan. Instead of just.
Yeah, 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 that's much, that's much.
So that would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Before we have a motion, do we have any public comment?
We do, we finished this entirely now or wait?
Well, no, you go ahead and what?
No, no, everybody did this one thing, I'm asking, this is several pages here of information, right?
Oh.
We still were doing the whole thing.
I don't think that there's you doing one.
Well, you said there's two things we had to look at.
Yeah, those two documents.
Right.
The employment agreement.
Right.
And the uh position specification. Those are the two documents.
I still have a question on.
Okay.
Terms of agreement.
Where?
Page nineteen.
Yeah, you can't change that.
I know that.
Yes, you may.
What I'm suggesting is.
Okay.
We have written in the policy that employees shall not engage in any other outside business, educational, professional, charitable, other activities, whether compensated or otherwise. That's stated in the policy.
No, that's not the policy.
And this, this was written here.
But no, this is the employment agreement.
But that's what it says right there, but then they negated in the next sentence.
That's exactly right.
Right, and that's not favorable for what we consider a full-time job. That's my opinion that.
Yeah.
The board has elected to take his activities and have him do other activities on his own time and partially our business time, because it says he has up to two days per week, maybe doing other things. And he's gonna make this up during the midnight hours, uh, as his other activities, so he's staying even or weekends or whatever.
Yeah.
But then his flexible hours can be anytime he would like. What I'm saying is, we don't have any documentation of how much work he's doing for the district or how much work he's doing for his own personal thing, double dipping is what I.
Well, I would, I would say that if he is. If if he isn't meeting his, his, the requirements of his employment agreement, then it becomes an issue.
And we're gonna define that by everything running on time and on schedule then.
Well.
That would happen during the evaluation period.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, and that's set up at what interval, six months, a year?
Six months.
Six months, yeah. That's what my point is, there is no way to document he's doing a good job or not. We've had several previous. They had previous managers that worked full-time, well, somebody went back east or vacation or whatever for their things, that was even worse.
That was pretty bad.
Right, and this is quite next to it. And we did the same thing again with this manager, and that's what I'm saying is we don't seem to have a good policy of following it. When it comes to the board's hiring capabilities, so I'm sure there's other people that don't do two jobs. And everybody seems to like to do this one in their spare time and then keep their main job for whenever you even want to leave your this opportunity, so you can always go back to the previous one.
I would, I would say, yeah, I would say that if the general manager is not meeting the expectations of his position, that would then come out in his evaluation.
And the board's doing the valuation.
That's right.
Alright, yeah, so what do you get rid of the board then?
Well, if you want to get rid of the board, that's up to you.
I don't, that's why I'm just saying that it's, we write a policy, then they should follow a policy.
This isn't a policy.
Then that should be, that's what I'm trying to say.
No.
It's written someplace that, and it makes sense, whenever I go to work for a company, they don't want me to have another job someplace else. That's standard policy of best good business. And if that isn't a policy, we need a policy. I'm not saying he has to not turn out what he's done, because he, he did a very good job with his negotiation, that's an excellent job that you had done there. And he's well pleased with it. I would be very pleased with that, but anyway.
They're not supposed to have outside jobs unless it's prior.
It says here.
Right, and that's what they gave him, was prior approval.
Right, or said it allowed him to have another job.
Right.
Yeah, it's in the second character.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
Oh.
He's fine, he did an excellent job. Compliment, I need to know who your contact is, negotiations.
Call me.
Can I do that? Okay, well, there's a good person that I know about, so she referenced, that's what I'm trying to relate here, is that we have policies that we should have as a district to relate to people's work, to do district work. Not saying, well, I'm gonna work on this today, and if I go out tomorrow, I'm gonna be available, phone calls like nine and twelve, at night or whatever. That's not acceptable, they're not gonna be in the working force, they don't have to be in the office. But he doesn't have to travel to wherever he has to go, same as going back to wherever the other guy went to go school. That was really.
That was a factor.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we did the same thing again here, that was my point, so we must not have a policy.
We don't have a policy.
Okay, that's where I'm going, we need a policy so this doesn't happen again.
Well.
Well.
Policy is what the board goes into agreement with.
Right.
So it's the board's decision on how they create employment agreement.
Right.
And so whatever's negotiated in that employment agreement is the policy for that term.
Right.
You could set.
Right, it's your contract, yeah, I agree with that.
You, the board could set a policy and then not enter into employment agreements based on that policy, but the board ultimately will make the decision. They're the five individuals who hired the general manager, and they will allow or disallow whatever's in the contract, so a policy would seem a redundant piece of information.
Yeah.
Much like you have policy or excuse me, employment agreements that entitle benefits to a general manager for vehicle lines. Those in housing relocation, maybe just the district bought a house and said, okay, you can live in the house, I mean, that's all. Those are all benefits that are negotiated, so things in my mind will supersede any policy that's set by the board.
It does.
I understand how you could do a good job as a GM and do another full-time job.
I'm not saying not doing a good job.
Thank you guys for giving this guy a shot credit, so.
If it wasn't for you, he wouldn't be doing such a good job. That's right, you do an excellent job.
Guy does more work than any other general manager I've ever seen in the eight years I've worked here. And I don't think you guys see how many hours I put in, how many hours this guy puts in. The hours that were working late into the night, early in the morning.
Yeah.
Um, this guy attends the vets hall once a month. He's putting out bi-weekly letters that we put out on our day off and on the weekend, yeah. Like, I think you guys.
It doesn't, see, that's, if I may. Two things, first of all, the, there's, there's not a contradiction here, it's very clear that it says unless, except as otherwise provided in this document.
Right.
The employee shall not engage in the outside, so it, it's very specifically laid out.
You can't get a third job.
Excuse me, yes, exactly. According to the terms of this contract.
That's what I just said, he has a good contract, I'm not disagreeing with that.
I'm not, but I'm saying is this, you started by saying there was a contradiction, and I'm starting by saying there is no contradiction. Because it does say shall not engage, uh, except as provided in the stocking, so that's A.
Why the hell have it in there?
B, it's not our job. You're talking to the wrong people, you need to be talking to the electorate, because it's the board that sets this. And it is not our job to formulate policies that, it is not our job to dictate to the board.
Yeah.
Now, you can convince the board, and if you don't like the board that you got, you can get another board.
That's right.
But to sit here.
I don't have a problem with it, I just wonder how he works those that many hours and still does another job, because I.
That's pretty good.
You guys not, you must not sleep, you know?
Yeah, I don't get, I don't get a lot of sleep at those, you know, I told this to the board that, you know, I have, you know, I'm forty, forty-nine. And this is what I'm gonna do to support the family and do what I have to do long range for while I have the energy to do it, so, yeah. Up late, I'm up early, and you know, I put in the work at the vets hall, or I'll come to, you know, if we have storm events, I'm here on the weekends. Um, when I do have my teaching obligation, I'm immediately on Zoom at three o'clock, I'm gonna work till nine o'clock. Um, you know, that's just what I'm doing. You know, you asked the question on how someone does a good job, I just hope that my work speaks for itself and some of the things that I've done and changes in staff and staff morale is on.
Yeah.
And we're starting to turn the tide on some bad practices for years and.
Yeah.
You know, that's my personal opinion and evaluation of it, I understand that others are bothered by it. I will say that Cambria has been, uh, it's had problems with keeping GMs. And so when I negotiate my contract, I said this in an open board meeting, when on my date that I was sworn in. Is that my current position at that time, forty-seven years old with four kids and mortgage, I wasn't going to quit something that I've been doing for better part of a decade to risk, to hope that the board likes me. Or in November, when we do have an election.
Yeah.
A new board comes in and says, yeah.
Yeah, we don't like it.
We don't like it anymore. So, you know, with that, you know, I do put in long hours and I can guarantee you that I do get full-time hours out of me. Regardless of what I'm doing in the background.
That's right.
And if I can, just to finish that, I think the, the wording here is, is much more specific than the previous GM's contract. And if anybody needs to be blamed, I'm sitting here, you can. Because I was the board, on the board that hired the guy and said, yeah, you can go do that. I'll also confess that when it came back for the second year, it said, gee, can I keep doing this? We should have said no.
Yeah.
And we did not, and that is on us.
That was my point.
Well, no, and I, I agree with you completely, but. Sit here at this committee and formulate a policy that you're gonna dictate to the board, because A, the board won't pass it if they don't want it. So, so as I say, if you're really, if this is still a matter of concern to you, you need to be looking at who's at this next election.
Yeah.
That's what you need to be working on, not, not trying to come up with a policy and dictate to this board. What, because they're negotiating.
And this employment agreement is the result of negotiations for a position. My position that I was in before I retired, um, you, you don't work forty hours. You, you work seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, and that's, and that's the responsibility.
Your salary usually.
Well, that's what he is, is salary.
Then he'd work twenty-four hours a day, but he doesn't.
Well, because.
No, that's what I'm trying to say, that's all.
You don't know, you don't know that.
I, that's my point, I don't know what I don't know.
We measure is his performance. That's what we measure is his performance. And based on his evaluation, then we can say, uh, see ya. Or we can say, we like what you're doing.
Mm-hmm.
So, to have a policy that then would supersede the board being able to do an employment agreement is not the role of a policy committee.
But the policy committee can make a policy saying this would be a preferred method as it does right there.
We can make a policy, but it will not be, it will, it, it, it wouldn't make sense to do that.
I know, but it's already written that that would be the policy that you don't have a second job. So that would be a policy.
An approval policy that, because that will bind their hands when they do an employment agreement.
No, then they could just accept it, just like they did there. That's fine.
Not too sure where we're supposed to go with this.
Yeah.
Write a new policy for not having two jobs is all.
Okay, so I have a, I have a question.
I agree with this one, because it's already done. I'm talking about future tense, because of this agreement in a previous year, this is a sequence of events. That's established a handshake agreement, sort of, well, you know, the next guy says. I could get this available too, because the previous guy had it, this guy had it, and the next guy hasn't.
No.
I could go drive my car and take the vehicle because they said I could do it the previous time.
Does that happen? Does that happen?
What they did, yes, they still are.
Does it happen today?
Right, it did.
No, does it happen today?
What?
That the job is not getting done.
That's getting done to my knowledge of.
Yes.
Information, I'm not disagreeing, I'm talking about policy.
You don't.
He's already made that deal, the next guy comes along, I'd like a hundred percent of his time on CCSD business. Or the other option is, you should get less salary for having two jobs.
And then I would recommend that you run.
You need to run for the board.
For the board. And that, and then you can be instrumental in making them happen.
Because seriously, if we were to pass such a policy, I can guarantee you that that board is not going to accept it, and we'd just be wasting our time.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, uh, we, this is not an oversight committee.
No.
And you gotta remember that, it is not oversight, we are advising.
I'm advising, the community would probably prefer that they have one person doing a hundred percent, if you would take a poll, Cambria. They would probably say that.
Go do a poll.
That's what I'm saying, that's. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm just suggesting.
So do it.
Just like people would much rather have the cars or vehicles be here for emergency.
I'm not sure about that.
I'm, I'm, I bet we get ninety percent.
I'm not sure about that.
I would, I'd have to take a poll.
Do a poll.
That's, that's fine. I'm just trying to relate what I hear in the community is all.
Yeah. Okay, so my recommendation and I, what I heard people nodding their hand about, I heard they're nodding hand, right? Was to change, to recommend changing the. Position description. And putting and, and actually titling the. Um, strategic plan, the strategic plan. Those are the two changes.
Okay, yeah.
So do I have a motion? Yes, public comment, yes.
Yes, I was going to comment on that as well. Um, Mr. McElhenney, when he came in, as you said. You were concerned about whether you would keep this job. Well. Are you still concerned about that? I mean, isn't it time to give up that second job?
I'm sorry, didn't run. You go.
Yeah, it's gotta be nice.
I'll, I'll respond later.
That, and. The fact that the district is running well is a tribute to you. A good general manager would hire good department heads and things should tick along pretty well. Maybe Cambria only needs a part-time general manager. That's fine. But I don't think that you should be paid a full-time salary for what is in fact a part-time job.
You think I'm working part-time?
That's apparently what the contract says.
Says that he can have another job.
It doesn't say that at all. You need to read the contract.
I read the contract.
Well, you need to read it again because it doesn't say that.
Okay.
It says that he can make it up on his own time, flex hours.
It's not flex hours.
It is.
It's all kinds of, it's retorted all over. Oh, an hour here and an hour there, just to make this work. And, you know, okay, the board was very generous to make that deal for the first year, but I. Wonder, I question whether it should be continued. And if it's a part-time position, that's fine, but it should be a part-time.
Well, that is your conclusion because there's nothing about part-time in here.
No, I know it doesn't. Right.
In, in terms of.
I am so thankful.
That, remember, the board changes every two years, so his job is only secure for two years.
Well, you know, we all have that problem with our jobs.
No, we do not. I didn't ask that.
Oh, unless you have tenure. If you're a tenured professor, you don't. But most of us professionals in the working world. Are subject to losing our positions or.
No, it's.
I, I, I think that.
We clearly disagree.
Well, we need to do, we need to be, um. Um, we need to get down to brass tacks.
Yeah, sorry.
In that, um, I hear, um, at least. One member of the committee saying that we need a policy. Okay. So, um, I disagree with that, but. What does the committee think? I agree with, with Gordon. I think for the next go around, I, I think it's weird that we hire people.
Yeah.
For a full-time position and they're working another full-time position, which means that they're not, you know, may, maybe. Mr. McElhenney can, can do two full-time jobs and not sleep, but, but most people, I'm not saying, you know, this, this won't be you, somebody in the future. But most people can't do two jobs without jeopardizing one or the other. People say they multitask. Multitasking is no task. It's, you know, both those things suffer. Okay, so.
Well, use me as an example. You guys only pay me forty hours per week. How many hours do you actually think I work? What is your second job? Seventy to seventy-five hours.
You work another job.
That's equal to almost two jobs.
Right.
In one week.
That is, this job is so absorbing, how could you possibly have a second job?
I'm a hard worker. I love putting in the hours.
Do another job. I'm gonna interrupt you all. Because what this has become is, I, I think. Uh, not fruitful at all. Um. I don't think we need a policy. I think we should vote. If you two, uh, do we need a policy? Make a motion that we need a policy. You wanna do that?
Well, that's what I was trying to do, but this is in the future because we're, we'll know this.
No, well, we have to deal with this. Do we need a policy?
That's what I would.
Are you making that motion?
Well, this is not, I was just trying to make a policy here, but you say you can't do anything to.
You can't change his, 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 his agreement.
But I can make a policy like it says there, you should not have two jobs.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, I, 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 I think that we should deal with this first. Policy, and we can put the idea of a policy on the agenda for next month or another meeting. It's been on, it's been on the agenda for months. No, no, it's a policy for. That's what I'm asking. Do we need a policy?
I think so because.
And you think so? Well, I think so, but I don't think it's appropriate to do it right now because it's not an agenda. We need to do an, yes, it is. It's on the agenda to consideration of a policy. So what we need to do is, do we need a policy? Is it a policy for his employment contract? No, it's a policy for the role of the general manager. Do we want, do, do we need a policy? And if so, I want a motion. And then I guess we need two policies. We need one for the current situation and we need a new one.
No, that, that's done.
That doesn't work that way. Well, then, then we can't do a policy. Which is what you want. I want you to tell me if you wanna do a policy, and if so, make a motion. I don't, I, I really don't think that it's appropriate to make a policy in the middle of discussion. Do you, do you want the policy? There is no policy right now. I understand that, but you're, 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 we're voting on, you know, a document. No, you're not. A policy. You're not voting on a document. Well, whatever, do we have the policy? No, what you're voting on is discussion. And consideration of the role of the general manage, manager policy. Do you want a policy or do you not want a policy? We don't have one. We don't have a policy for general manager. No. At all. No. Oh.
But again, the board sets. The direction of the GM, it's your electeds that.
Yeah.
Right.
Establish the roles and responsibilities of the GM to help design this position description. I would just think. That if the policy committee puts forward a policy to the board to tell them how to direct the general manager.
It's gonna fail in.
It's gonna die on arrival, but you're more than happy to.
No, that's why I'm asking. Do we have a majority of the policy committee that wants, that wants to create a policy? A general manager policy? But that's kind of different than, well, that's. No, are you afraid to make a motion?
This is, I'm trying to figure out where to put the darn thing, because I don't see anything here that says general manager's role.
It's.
As a policy.
It's in the list.
Well, it's, we've got his contract. And then we're trying to make one for a policy.
No, I'm saying, do you want a general manager's role policy?
Right, that's what I thought we were doing.
We don't have a policy. Do you want one?
Discussion consideration of the role of a general manager policy.
Yep.
And that's.
And why would you make a motion?
That doesn't have a.
That's what you want. And we should edit the policy that we haven't brought before. We don't have a policy.
We don't have a policy.
So we're just deciding whether we wanna write a policy. Yes. Oh, okay. So all of a sudden, we've been talking about all these things about his role. It has nothing to do with the policy. The policy. There is no policy.
There is no.
Well, yeah, I, I, I would like to make a motion that we have a policy regarding the general manager. Okay, you have a second?
A second is.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, all those opposed?
Opposed. It's, it's wasted time.
Okay.
Ted, you're full of beans because we're doing a policy that doesn't exist. Anyway, that's fine.
Right, why, why was this on the?
Right, what do we?
Because originally, originally, some CCSDs have a policy. That's the role of the general manager.
Right.
Yeah.
I gave you all of the documents that are in place right now. We do not have a policy. Uh, I see. Yeah. Okay. So.
I don't, I don't see this being, I just don't. If, if I were on a board and I was planning to hire somebody.
Yeah.
I just don't see how I would want to be. How, I would be hopeful to be handcuffed.
Right.
To, 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 uh. You know, that, that just.
That's your problem, is if you're being handcuffed.
Let him, let him.
I just, I just, I just, yeah, but. But as a board member, I'm going to be looking at, 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 an agreement. At, at an agreement and evaluation period. You know, if, if, if. If, if we come to an agreement of, of what will work for the district as a board, not just me, but as a board. And we say, this is, this is what we think will, will be in agreement. With, uh, with the general manager. And the general manager does not perform. The job in, you know, during a six, six month or whatever the evaluation period is. Then that's, that's. You know. Then that's where you have cause or issues to, to, to terminate, to terminate the employment. It just seems, it just seems to me, so if, if, yeah, I mean.
We've had a, we've had, uh, we've had a motion and a second, and it was voted down. So now, do we have a motion to recommend to the board? The changes that we.
Because of your vote.
Yeah, it was.
That's my point. So that's three in a row I've gotten.
Well.
Well.
That's, that's not getting a full policies commitment here is all.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't see.
No, that's fine.
Okay, so. So my, so my question is. Do we wanna leave it all alone? Or do we wanna make those recommendations to the board whereby we add the strategic plan reference into. The position?
Well, that I agree.
Yes.
That I agree with.
So we need a motion for that.
Well, I move we add that in there. Yes.
What do you need that for?
Because it's a, it's a, it's a part of the evaluation process. It's, you know, is, is, is the employee meeting? Our expectations.
I read those and he's missing half of them.
Okay, that, that's.
But that, but that's.
My point.
That, that's the board's decision.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
It's the board's decision.
Okay, so we had, do we have a second?
Yeah, I second.
Okay, so all those in favor of making those changes to the position description, say aye.
Aye. You know, that you both, that's just, you know.
Any opposed?
Or.
No.
I think Jim opposed.
But Jim's opposed, yeah. All right, let's go now to agenda item four C. You know what I wanted to do? I wanna go to four D first.
Yeah.
Four D is the discussion and consideration of the legislative advocacy policy. And the only reason that's even on the agenda is because it got approved. By the board at its last meeting, and I wanted to say congratulations to you all. And good. They didn't make any chamber at all.
Well.
Yeah, it's here.
And, and I, and I do think that was a wise decision.
Yep. It was a really light. Okay. So, yay.
What, I didn't, I'm sorry.
That was four D.
Oh, four D.
Yeah.
It says discussion and consideration.
Yeah.
So that means we need to vote on it.
Well, you can vote on it, but.
No, that's what I said, that's what it's titled. Discussion and consideration, not just discussion.
Well, I want, uh, uh, well, let's do a vote then.
It is open to vote, doesn't mean you have to take.
Doesn't, yeah, I mean, you have to, but.
But if you want to, yeah.
I mean, they, they approved it. I just wanted to say congratulations. With the changes that. You all. There are your changes.
Right, this was, this was. This was submitted by us.
Yeah. Good job. Congratulate you. Okay.
I was gonna say, congratulations.
Yes, yes. So, uh, four C then, um, you have this beautiful list of all the thoughts. And what I thought was really, thank you very much. Madam. Okay, um. If you look at the, at page. If you look at page thirty. There's a list of policies that were discussed at the policy committee meeting. And the date that they were. Discussed. So I think it's very nice that we have this list of. The work that we've been doing.
Yes.
Um, page thirty on our agenda.
Yeah. Page thirty of the agenda packet.
I don't have that.
Yeah.
Now, I don't know, I don't know.
Oh, it's thirty-two.
Thirty-two, yeah.
Oh.
There's something thirty-one didn't look like the right page.
Yes.
I know that one of the things that we have discussed on occasion, and I, and I, I give deference to, to Gordon on this is. The idea that we should have some sort of. Uh, evacuation drill with this community. I, I really do believe that that's something that we should do.
Yeah, and I'm gonna let Mr. McElhenney speak to that because, um, we have recommended that. People have recommended that, but, um. Mr. McElhenney can explain to you why that's not within the. The CCSDs.
Yeah, that's more of a coordination with OES. So it's gonna be the fire chief working with OES, the sheriff's department. That's gonna be rather large scale. So our location and how we would have to coordinate with them. The other piece, piece of it is that we'll work on some grants to actually do some research and. Evacuation route planning.
Okay.
Hardening. Um, Mill Valley did a partnership with the group on a, on a pretty large project where they did some. Not a Google person, but you know, some, some high level analysis of their evacuation routes and mapping and planning. So we're working on that as well. And the chief is working with the county fire chiefs and along with OES on some of those things. It's just gonna take a little bit of time for us to get there to. To have that large scale of evacuation plan.
So it will happen. But. CCS.
But it's not necessarily in the purview of the CCS. Fire, okay, all right. Yeah, but I, but I totally.
Seven years at this policy committee, and we haven't done one thing to help improve anything for the city of Cambria's fire. Resistance. Zero. We do get grants that we don't get. We talk a lot, we go do studies. I know it takes me four hours. To get out of the morbid.
Yeah.
That's nice to know.
Yeah. Well, there's a lot, there's a lot of work being done regarding the issue of the. Difficulty of evacuating Cambria.
Supposedly, we have signs on order. It's supposed to have been received already, my understanding.
Who, who ordered them?
Through a grant.
Who ordered them?
I don't know. That's just, I just heard. If there's science news available. This is. Emergency accidents or whatever. I don't know what they say. Emergency accidents or whatever. I don't know what they say.
Would, would that be fire wise?
I don't know, there's a grant.
The Fire Safety Focus Group did apply for a grant for sirens. Uh, oh, so, so we're looking at tweaking that. A little bit because county OES is kind of going away from sirens. So we're looking at other measures for evacuation. warnings, it's like that. But that's in the works.
Oh.
It's theoretical, I heard. Someone mentioned, maybe to the fire group or whatever.
Yeah.
That there were signs already on order and trying to be delivered. That's all, I don't know.
I don't know about order, we haven't been funded yet, so I'll kind of check for that. There's like a CCSD.
It'd be a fire safe.
Yeah, maybe it's the fire safe.
It was a grant supposedly.
Is the fire safety group gonna be putting up sirens in Cambria?
Uh, there was a discussion of that.
I just asked, are they gonna be doing, is that gonna be done, but?
No, they're gonna find another way now.
We're, we're looking at some other options.
Or other options. What's other options, like telephoning people's cell phones?
Yeah, we're worse than nine-one-one, there's, you know. There's a few different technologies that are out there that we have to look to see if it fits into the grant scope. The whole grant scope changes once you say. We want to do this and put up three sirens, four sirens all over the district and now you're changing the scope entirely, but we're working with the grant manager on that. Which is OES.
Why, why did they, why, why did they decide not to use sirens?
So a lot of the sirens in the San Francisco County area are really only used for Diablo. They're not really used for fire evacuation or other types of emergencies. They're really, their main point was for Diablo for like some type of nuclear. Um, event, meltdown, you know. For us in Cambria, if we put in sirens, there. Has been some discussion or account, oh yes, the fire chief, myself on, would that create mass panic?
Yeah.
Uh, and.
I think a fire would be a mass panic. I don't care what nuclear fire, that means something's going stray. That's my point as well. Whereas we're sitting here not doing anything for five or six years and then fortunately to get more rain in the last two years, things are getting wet. Now we're gonna have probably a dry summer and then we're gonna be saying, well, I don't know, but we'll phone up somebody and see if zone heaven can figure out where you should be. In your zone.
Fire chiefs done a really good job of, hey, talking about zone haven, getting you to know your zones. Um, promoting reverse nine-one-one. The chief is also looking at grants with Verizon to get. Um, backup generators and backup power to some of those cell sites, which is limited, but those are some of the methods. We live in Cambria. We chose to live in Cambria. There's, we, we, we are where we are. We're around the pines that we love that are also. Drying and creates an incredible fire threat. And we have limited evacuation routes.
So Santa Rosa.
What's that?
So Santa Rosa.
Correct, and Paradise.
Yes, Paradise.
And California.
And Redmond.
I was saying, that's, that's what you need to prepare for and we haven't done, and that's what Ted was bringing up is it. That's still a high priority.
Absolutely.
It is.
It's so high that I haven't heard anything that's been positive yet.
That's why, that's why you just heard.
It's hard to say that you haven't heard anything positive. We've been working on zoning. Fire State Focus Group, Wildfire, the Baroness Event, you brought in, you know, the Fire State Focus Group brought in a bunch of different experts that ran through a fire scenario, so.
Yeah.
It's not like we've been quiet on the issue.
They've been also limbing up all the trees along the highway. They, they just did a winter going into, onto part of. Cut it back. They've been doing all kinds of things to, which is, you know, to help prevent fires.
Right.
Talking about sirens, I do not want a siren, siren going off every single month. I would go berserk. So let's find another way.
The testing or the.
Exactly.
There would be tests there, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
No sirens.
But it was just, you know, without direction as to where to go, sirens would just create.
Yeah.
Total chaos.
Yeah.
No better reason.
So, yeah, important. The other thing that. The fire prevention plan that is in place, what do we have? Fourteen days?
All right, so we made it.
Yeah.
Yep, so our district lots have, should be all we debated by this Friday. So ahead of schedule there, David and his crew's been working around the clock, you know, right, they're doing a great job. Um, we've been putting out an incredible amount of blast outs.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if you miss that, man, you gotta be living under a rock.
It's got some folks' attention, but a lot of ours, because they're starting to call, because their contractor is returning the phone calls, so the message is getting out there, so that's good. We have our contractor for the public nuisance list on standby, ready to go, so when the board on the twenty-fifth passes the public nuisance list. He's gonna get that list and he'll be on, he knows that he's gonna hit the ground running. He has crews ten, fourteen, fifteen folks.
Basically the screw up that happened last year is probably not gonna happen this year.
No.
I'm, I'm sorry, but what is the name of the weed abatement person, the people that you use? That's not, Paradise is gonna be the coming one, right?
Yes.
And what was the one that you used already?
Uh, last year was Mike Rice.
Mike Rice.
No, I mean, now, before.
We haven't used any.
You haven't.
No, not till the fifth.
I was at an NCHC meeting and they said that there was another company that was used.
There's several. They're on the website.
Yeah.
Oh, they're on the.
A list of contractors?
Yeah, they're on the website. Okay, and all the emails that come to every, they're all there.
The emails?
Yeah. Are you on the mailing list?
No.
Yeah.
A cookie question?
Then email this for weed abatement.
Perfect.
Oh, yeah, so I blast out weekly, um, notices to the public regarding weed abatement and anything related to the fire department. Um, so I'll add you to that list.
I, I don't need weed abatement, I don't, I don't have any weeds.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have any property.
I mowed mine twice.
Done.
I live in Park Hill, there's no weeds.
Okay, well, uh, in terms of Cal Fire, doing the properties that have houses.
Yeah.
Is the district coordinating with them in any way?
Uh, I mean, as much as the district can in terms of, I mean, they're the ones that go out, do the LE one hundreds and do the inspections, um, with our newly. Adopted administrative citation program. The district, as a part of their process going through and looking at inspecting some of the lots, they're gonna keep an eye on developed parcels. But unfortunately, we don't have the staff. We have one engine that's on per day and so to go out and, um. Manage individual properties, develop properties, probably is gonna be beyond our. Our abilities in terms of staffing.
So if I have a property across the street with a house on it that goes vacant and the weeds are up to here, whom should I?
Okay, you can contact our fire department. I'm sorry, I thought you're, if we're going around from house to house to house.
Well, oh, no, what I, cause I, I know it's really Cal Fire's job and I wouldn't know who to talk to and I think maybe.
Uh, you can contact A Cal Fire and, and Chief Rurkey. Um, from our side though, we issue citations, it's not necessary that we go in there and force it, we don't do it. So that doesn't necessarily solve your problem. Um, but, but Cal Fire does our LE one hundred, tells them about the violations and the hope is that you'll motivate the property owner. Both the CCSD side, you can actually issue citations.
Yeah, we just recently got that.
So, in terms of notifying the public right now. Where, where are we at? I mean, if there, if there was a, I'm sorry, fire, if there, if there. If there is imminent danger of fire. What do we?
Zone, zone human and genesis and then reverse nine-one-one system.
That's what we have.
Yes, and then eventually when we get cert back up and running and, and a little more organized, we'll have those folks that can help with warnings as well. Yeah.
Where is the cert situation?
Uh, we're just waiting, uh, they do have a list of their three different classifications, responders, what was it? Helpers, Sam, leaders, but we.
Responders and supporters.
Responders and supporters. Uh, we have a list of those folks and then they're starting to work on turning in the report. So it's really up to cert to see how quickly they can get their report in.
Those people are gotten from what source?
Cert themselves.
Are you advertising for certs people?
I, I don't advertise for certs, cert is their own thing, so cert.
That's what I'm asking. You, you discontinued it and put it under something else.
We didn't, no, we didn't discontinue anything. The previous chief told them that we need to clean up the process and we need. A roster of individuals, Mexican, who's a responder, who's not. And that turned out to be problematic because it was rather messy.
Oh my god.
I didn't cancel certain.
Somebody canceled certs.
Nobody's canceled cert.
There's been no certs meetings or contact.
You have to talk to cert.
Cert canceled certs, yeah.
Uh, the district doesn't manage cert as much as cert is underneath districts, the fire chief, but we don't manage cert.
Yeah, it's a dotted line.
It's a volunteer program.
Cert gets their direction though from fire department or some other source to be activated. They don't do it on their own.
Correct, well.
No, they cannot do it on their own.
Sure, but they have in the past and that's part of the.
Oh, I see.
You know, so that's why there's part of these cleanup processes because the fire department multiple times in the past, you know, under old. Leadership would have certain members show up on an incident and so we just think of some of those processes, it's happened a few times. But the chief is the one that would activate cert or the captain on duty or the duty officer.
So it's on, cert is under the fire chief.
It is under the fire chief.
Right, that's what you just said, it wasn't, okay.
No, I said.
The fire chief is making application so they can read it to determine who's qualified, be called in certain circumstances.
We will activate cert if needed. Cert will need to come forward with those individuals. Names, IDs, background checks, and then workers' compensation. Forms, disaster worker forms and all of that needs to be filled out, so we have it and we know who's potentially on cert and who would arrive as, and we don't have that.
So I would recommend that you talk to the fire chief.
That sounds like the next.
Yeah.
Position.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, the other thing that we're doing and maybe Haley, you could, I'm sorry, Ms. Dotson. You could, um, update us on, um, when, when is it that the policies? Uh, the personnel policies are going before the board?
So we have it currently scheduled for July, but the SEIU has requested to meet and confer with the district. Uh, after we provided them what the notice and the policy itself.
Okay.
Um, so we are starting that process in the next couple of weeks. Um, so we expect that it'll be on the second board meeting in July, but it could potentially be pushed. There's a lot of negotiations back and forth.
Okay.
Hmm.
So I, I noticed that a lot of these, um, policies under personnel would be covered in a.
Yeah, you guys have been working on that.
Yeah, so a lot of these, I don't think that we necessarily need to, um, prepare. That people already be in the one policy itself.
Right.
Pretty much all of the three thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
So what are we supposed to be doing with this policy list? When it shows things of importance are not covered or like.
Yeah.
Or not covered.
Well.
Yeah, what?
Let's go through it real quickly, because we just have a few minutes left. But under section one thousand of the general, um, the policy that we have actually. Um, uh, um, reviewed here at this policy committee and sent to the board. Is policy one thousand. Policy ten thirty. Um, policy ten forty point two.
Yeah.
Policy ten forty and then, um. We just talked about the overview of the general manager's role. Um, but we just voted to not have a policy. And then policy ten fifty-five is legislative advocacy, so that's already been approved. And then the last policy is under, uh, general is policy ten fifty-six.
Six, which actually is an old one.
And I think ten fifty-six, we got rid of it.
Oh, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a duplication, so we'll get rid of that.
And there was one other in here. Oh, we did do the legal counsel and auditor.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Yes.
Anything else that we haven't looked at?
No, I, I think, yeah, yeah. We did do, um, I think we added the one. About, oh, the correspondence with the board that we, that got approved. That was a little difficult. And then under, um, section two thousand, that is finance and finance committee has done a lot of work.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's actually their area.
Yeah.
Yeah, the finance committee, um, recently reviewed the investment policy and that was board approved at last week's board meeting.
Yes.
So this will be updated.
So that would be.
Policy twenty-one thirty.
Right, six, uh, seven, was it seventeen?
Uh, the twentieth.
Twenty?
Yeah.
Six twenty, twenty-four?
And then the purchasing policy Denise and I finalized last week.
Oh, good.
Um, we have a meeting scheduled with the general manager because we did have a couple of questions that we need to run by him to make sure, um, he'd be okay with. And then once we have that ready, we can.
That was something that I know.
Bring it back to you guys for review, but we completely revamped it. It's not the old policy that we had.
Yeah.
God, we referred to Templeton CSD and Los Osos CSD for our new policy.
Would that be under finance or would it be under policy?
Um, well, it's under here, under purchasing policy, but I. Probably go to both.
Okay, great.
So if you'd like it, go to.
There's some significant numbers.
Okay, so, so that can be on our future agenda items. Purchasing.
Would you like it to go to finance first or would you like to come to policy first?
It doesn't, I think you could do it at the same time.
Okay.
Yeah. Purchasing and then the other one, um, just looking at the personnel police, policies, not that we are. Um, gonna look at changing them because they've been gone through, but I just would like the policy committee to review them.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would hope that they would be ready. By July's policy meeting, if I, um, I, I can't make any promises.
No, that's okay.
For a process can take a while.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, I'm, we'll, we'll do that, um.
Uh, there's.
Is there anything more? Oh, here, under.
Oh, I have.
Operating principles, we passed that one. That's under section thirty-two hundred, standards of conduct.
Thirty-two hundred.
Yeah, on page thirty.
Yeah.
Dress code? Yeah, that's a, a personnel policy.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's personnel.
You said that was passed? No.
Yeah, that's in process.
Oh, yeah, it's in process with personnel policy.
With, yeah, with H, HR. That may be you.
Yeah, why did you say that?
We have an outside consultant now. HR and then the general.
No, it's under personnel.
Top of everything else.
It's already in another policy.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't get what you mean, yeah, I think.
And, and the CCS, we did under section thirty-six hundred, we did the CCSD owned vehicle policy.
Mm-hmm.
So. That's gonna go. That final policy, that'll go to the board. When is that going to the board?
Um, this is on the, um, July.
Seventeen, yeah, or July seventh.
See, it's eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
The July eighteenth board agenda, okay.
Okay. Okay.
Hey.
Yep.
But I mean, you know, bottom line is. There's still a lot of action, I think.
Actually, uh, can I add that I think on twenty-one seventy and twenty-one seventy-one, those were both actually discussed by the policy committee. And that's why you have two, uh, you have the SST projects and then the regular grants.
Yeah.
Both policy committee and the policy committee divided them in half.
Okay.
Cause what they did was create a new policy for grants and the old policy left for the SST. And, and that's an interesting one because when we did the grants, the argument was. The, the issue was how much do you fence in what the general manager can do? Um, and the argument was made, which the policy committee agreed to, which is. Look, you don't need to put so many fences around the general manager. If you don't trust the general manager, fire him.
Yeah.
Don't just rely on policy, fire him if you don't trust him to do the right thing. And, and this, this committee and you were all, some of you were on that committee at that time, so. Uh, I just wanted to point something out that we, that we had done both of those. I was rather proud of us on that one.
Yeah.
Cause that was actually a major policy change.
Yeah.
It was quite major.
What one were you talking about?
The, the grants, oh, so twenty-one seventy and twenty-one seventy-one.
Uh, I noticed that, that, uh, uh, the section thirty-seven hundred policy has no number of emergency pages that can be part of the. Uh. HR stuff that you're working on with COVID nineteen?
Yeah.
Uh, we actually had an emergency paid simply policy in place in twenty-twenty-one, but that actually expired September thirtieth of that year. And so it's no longer even, it's not an active policy at this point.
Okay, so it's.
Uncle COVID is.
And it was never assigned, um, a policy number. In our handbook.
Should we do that? Well, yeah, that, that's what comes to mind, and I mean, cause there'll be another one. I mean, I, you know, it, it, first of all, Co- COVID, first of all, COVID nineteen ain't over. And, and second of all, you know, there, there, there will be another one, so I'm just.
It's, it's already, we're exactly good. Um, somebody's been called to my attention and, um. It's it's already very, it's ugly. Um, somebody's been called to my attention and um, I actually think it's fairly serious. Um, that is that um. When David Agiri took over, there were no policies to tell him how to do his job. So he's been calling Carlos a lot. Fortunately, Carlos is really nice and he has spent hours helping him to do his job. And I just think that's a real shame. I think we really fell down on that one and. You know, we argue about policy, you know, but policies are there to help people do their job.
Sure.
You know, if there's no policy, and I remember when Carlos was doing it, so people played all the time about, so I don't know what to do. You know, he put. He put dumpsters and and porta potties out there for the homeless people and he got yelled at, you know, by the, you know, previous G M or whoever yelled at him and. How can you yell at me? There's no policy for that, you know? I just tried to do the best job I can. And there was a lot of that. I mean, because I we worked within because we have the trippers, the trash cans, so but um. I really, I don't know where you put it, but I I think there needs to be a policy for.
Well, it has to be his job description.
Isn't even just a job description. It's actually a, you know, the policies and, you know, what what is a policy? And, you know, as far as do you do you put trash cans and and porta potties out for the for the homeless people? Do you go out onto the Fiscalia Ranch and do you clean up things? That's a policy, is it? You know, whether you do those kinds of things or not. So, yeah, there needs to be a job description too, but and now the new guy has been added more work, you know, and I don't know. I and, you know, it's just, it seems. I don't, I feel sorry for them because they're the only one, I don't, besides you two, they're the only ones that really, really work hard, I think, and 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 don't get paid enough.
That's not true.
That's not so.
Well, I know Carlos used to work many twelve hour days. Now you'd think he worked longer than that, so I don't know, but I know that Carlos worked in many, many, many over hot time hours. And McAlhany is doing the same thing. Uh, not McAlhany, uh, Gary's doing the same thing because partly because he doesn't know, you know, what I'm good enough to help and there's no resource to be doing and try to figure it out and.
Yeah, I'm I'm sure um Mr. McAlhany will will follow them.
Yeah, we're obviously that whole facilities and resources department has been underfunded four years.
Yeah.
And so basically, they've got the whole world, the the weight of the world under shoulders.
And then you added in the the with the the toilets and yet it is this, that, and the other.
Um, really, that statement's, I. I find it funny because the the that's a fraction of their time. We were paying thirty eight, thirty three hundred dollars, thirty five hundred dollars a month for the restrooms. It's a fraction of their time, which is a little bit in the mornings, a little bit in the evening. That that's it. And then save thirty hundred dollars and able to fund another position. So if you're spending this much time on restrooms from the pay position that you're able to fund. And then you get this much more out of them because they're able to go help we debate lots, which, by the way, our district staff, we debated the district lots.
Yeah.
We used to contract out for that, which cost us fifty, sixty, seventy thousand.
Oh, yeah.
So there's a there's a some efficiency there. And so I wouldn't say that the restrooms are the nail in the coffin for our F and R staff.
And there is, there's a lot of work being done right now with identifying, you know, on the um, on the ranch. You know, what is the position? What is the responsibility of C C S D and what is the responsibility of other entities? So.
There's an ad hoc committee that's been formed and we've met twice already and we're going to talk and look at the ranch management plan and.
Yeah.
There's changes coming.
Yeah.
And and please include the trippers because the trippers are C C S D's responsibility to maintain.
The what?
The trippers.
The garbage cans.
Gotcha.
With the plants in them. My husband.
Laundry list of things there are.
Yep. Okay, so so we are.
Recycle planters.
So I what I would recommend is that you all keep this um and use this um to do future agenda items, things that you think that we need to um. Uh, work on. Um, and that will be under future agenda items. I already have purchasing and I have personnel policies policies that will be given to us once they're complete. Is there anything else under uh future agenda?
Oh, the lighting policy.
Yeah, I'll I'll take a look at. And what probably what you need to do is begin an outline of what that needs to include.
But I've re- wrote a lighting policy. I'll just, I'll send you what.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
And there's a bunch of backup information with it. And just for a little point of interest, um, we are in the process of changing out almost fifty lights at the Bluebird.
Oh, nice.
So we unified Cambria's first initiative is doing that. And we hope that that will inspire other hotels to do the same. So take the fore and after picture.
Great.
Cool.
Okay.
Deborah, Laura does have her Cambria. It's, let me bring her in.
Yes, please.
Hi, Laura. I'm asking her to undo. I felt I can't undo her.
There. There. Okay, guys, I've been trying to talk to you through the whole meeting. I've been here and it is my ignorance. Crosby was running errands and I am not. His computer just wasn't working for me, so I I apologize for that. It's it's my my mistake. Ted, thank you for your kind words, but as you can see, I have trouble with this. A simple computer, so maybe I should just attend attend the meetings and not be on a committee right now. But. And and the thing is, I know you, I know your meeting is almost over. I did have a a thing, a a comment on the climate. Um, report. That's that's why I tuned in to start with, and I know you're running out of time, so maybe I should just call Deborah and and give it to her so I don't take up any more of your time.
If you would be so kind as to do that, that would be wonderful.
Okay.
Get off forward it to the people who need that information.
Okay, yeah, I can understand. You guys have had a little bit of a tiring meeting. I can identify with that. So I will. Anyhow, I will talk to Deborah and then she can get forward it and because I really clear, I really care about the climate and there's a lot of effects to be dealt with on that. So thank you, guys, and thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Yes. Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay, um. Did we, I I refresh my memory, the homeless population policy, did we we discuss that?
No, or not when, not when I.
Not when you were around, you know.
You want me to put it on the agenda?
Well, it's been asking for you. What what what? Would you just put it in? I can.
Okay.
What what on is the question? I I I because. Because this, you know, this came up with the, you know, porta potties and all that. And so, you know, since that was brought up in this meeting, I just, I'm just. I'm just wondering if that's something to be considered. So this makes things better.
So um, and I do want to say thank you so much for being so involved and caring about what's going on here. Um. I I I just had to sit some limits, so um hopefully you will um appreciate that in the future sometime. Thank you, um, Christine, for being here. We really appreciate your attendance.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I I will appreciate working with you.
I think that that'd be great.
We have an opportunity.
Yes. So based on that, um, I would like to adjourn.
Yeah.